Hey, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council held this Monday, November 7, 2022. We are in council chambers and live streaming on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. Next meeting will be held on Monday, November 21, 2022. Mr. Paulo, as Clerk of Council, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
And Ms. Warden.
Here.
We have a quorum with everyone present. The agenda will remain as presented, and would you please stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If someone would be so kind, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of October 17, 2022. Motion by Mr.?
Mr. Dordia.
Mr. Dordia.
I don't think it's going to fall.
I didn't rec- I did not recognize the voice, but I thought maybe-
That's a reflex.
So moved.
You've been to one too many board meetings.
Hey, Mr. Dordia, does Pavlov ring a bell? I've never seen you blush like that. Get a close of that.
That's too funny.
So, same thing that we can entertain that motion to approve with their- someone else liked the way and, uh-
I concur.
Joel?
I concur.
I seconded that.
Ms. Knappich.
Ms. Knappich, uh-
Moved. Yes, I'm so moved, yes.
Ms. Knappich moved to approve the minutes of October 17th. Is there a second?
Mr. Cavan.
Mr. Cavan, the seconded.
Okay.
All in favor of approving the minutes of October 17, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the minutes of October 17, 2022, have been approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. Hopefully that you got all your leaves done this weekend because having a weekend like we had this far into the month of November is pretty amazing.
Yep, and I'm happy to say the City of Worcester's crew came by and sucked them all up and they're out of there already, so.
Well, I understand they were working Saturday, this past Saturday, too, so they've been really on it.
It's been busy, for sure, so. Well, welcome, Council. Nice to see everybody. Just actually quite a bit of information to pass on to you since our last council meeting. The big news is the city was awarded a half million dollar critical infrastructure grant to remodel our fire station number one next to City Hall. This along with our normal allocation grant of $127.5,000 brings 627,500 to the rehab of our city's oldest fire station built in 1961. Thanks to the administration and fire team that helped make this happen, a big thank you to Jonathan Malley, who's here tonight, who put together the grant application, got turned down two times before he convinced Ohio Department of Development that we met the qualifications for the grant and they awarded it to us. So Jonathan earned his keep in those phone calls to the state. So this really helps to move our fire station project forward. That really fills a pretty good-sized gap for us and we're so thankful. Wayne Webster, the College of Worcester's interim president, held an informal community and campus conversation on October 18th. It's nice to keep in contact with that important piece of our community. Wayne Center for the Arts held a partner engagement session to generate ideas and feedback for the forward direction of the art center. So our thanks to Sarah Brink for helping put that on and the efforts that they're making. We had normal meetings of the dispatch cog, the Worcester Community Hospital and Main Street Board since our last gathering, celebrated with the Boys and Girls Club at the open house of their new offices on North Walnut Street, right next to President Biden's office, participated in focus groups for the Worcester City School Strategic Plan, attended the Worcester Chamber Wayne Economic Forum this past Thursday and learned from five leaders in our society. Kerry Jeros, president and CEO of Gojo Industries, spoke last and was very complimentary of their Worcester manufacturing facility and the role it played in handling the pandemic. Joel and I met with Kathy Ann Kress, Dean of College of Food Agricultural and Environmental Science and the VP of Ohio State University, and Anne Dorance, Director of the OARDC. We are very fortunate to have this facility of Ohio State University as a part of our city. We just talked about things that we can work together in, and one of them is the possibility of the digester out on Seacrest Road that's identical to the digestors that we have at our wastewater treatment plant. So some good possibilities of working together on things. And I'll finish with the good news out of our city's recreation division. Just finished the Socrates season with 123 teams of first to eighth graders played here in Worcester. Thirteen teams were Worcester WSA teams. The season went from September 17th to October 22nd, and things are finally getting back to normal. That's the first real normal Socrates season we've had since COVID started. Saturday, this past Saturday, from 6:00 to 8:00 at our community center saw 82 couples of fathers and daughters, 175 people total, enjoy the daddy-daughter dance, the first time held since COVID started in 2020. It was a 50 sock hop with dancing games, crafts, a selfie booth, and a professional picture by Calais for the participants. A great memory maker. Thanks to our rec team for putting this all together. So that's sort of what our year administrative team's been doing since the last time we met. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marvelous news, and I know Mr. Malley does yeoman duty for the City of Worcester in terms of finding these grants and working on them, so, uh, good job, Mr. Malley.
Round of applause for your persuasive-
I realize that, and you'd be the first one to give credit for that, too.
We have a petition with regard to a transfer of a liquor license. If you would read that, please, Mr. Paulo.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a from Worcester Hotel to LLC and Patio, 959 Dover Road, Worcester, Ohio 44691. That's the Hilton Garden Inn. Yeah.
As you know, we have three choices here. We can request a hearing here in Worcester since it's the county seat. We can request a hearing down in Columbus before the Division of Liquor Control, or we can waive having a hearing. So what's your-
Motion to waive-
I just had a quick question if anyone knows. Did it switch hands? Is there a new owner? Is that what the-
Well, it's being transferred from the previous owner to a different LLC, so I don't know if the-
New owner.
The owner of the franchise sold it to a new owner, hence requiring the transfer.
Okay.
And sometimes people just change names for whatever, but my guess it's a new owner which necessitated the transfer.
Okay.
So, did Mr. Ansel make a motion to waive the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing?
Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Ms. Knappich?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes.
And Ms. Warden?
Yes.
The hearing will be waived, and Mr. Paulo, as you have done numerous times, would you please notify the Division of Liquor Control that we waive the hearing? Thanks, I appreciate it. We have no communications from the public on agenda items. We did have a wonderful report by Mr. Myers on the recycling program. You want to give a brief synopsis?
Sure. What we talked about was the recycling programs that we have here in our community with the curbside pickup and the drop-off locations, the types of things that can be recycled. Again, the most biggest question I get is, you know, can number twos, ones and twos of plastics be recycled? And the answer is no. The single-use containers, like the yogurt containers and the single-use plastic clamshell containers, are not currently recyclable. So only things that are bottles and jugs in the plastic category. And we also have a lot of resources on the city website and links to the Tuskegee Stark Wayne Solid Waste District, of which we, of course, are a member, so I encourage people to go there. The website for the district is called Time to Recycle. Pretty easy, so either go through the city website or to that one to get more information.
And please, no greasy pizza.
No pizza box.
Yes, all right. We have no unfinished business. We do have three items in the new business, starting out with ordinance number 2022-31. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. It's slated for three readings, but I will ask Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2022-31, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2016-10, authorizing the mayor to include tenant as a party to the community reinvestment area agreement and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a authorization for the mayor to modify the city's existing CRA 16-002 agreement with North Pole Holdings LLC Enterprise by authorizing Westfield Bank as a facility tenant, which acknowledges the city's compliance with ORC 5709.633 and allowing Briggs Financial Group in connection with North Pole Holdings to credit the tenants' resulting jobs towards its creation requirements. To date, North Pole Holdings has exceeded its payroll commitment while having fewer jobs than committed, but within the range of compliance within the agreement. By allowing the tenants' jobs and payroll to be credited, North Pole Holdings will be able to show full compliance resulting from the original rehabilitation work it enabled.
Well, that's fine.
So really, this is just a cleanup, not really a cleanup. It's adding, it's adding Westfield Bank and allowing them to utilize their employment numbers as the overall package for the CRA.
That was a conversation killer there, Mr. Sanders.
Absolutely. That's all right.
I haven't heard that big a dead silence in this chamber in a long time.
As it was explained to me by Jonathan, yeah, it was an exciting conversation. But I get it, and like I say, this is just, again, one of these things that we have to do from time to time.
And it doesn't really cost us any money, and it just-
It just allows, it allows the CRA, it allows North Pole Holdings to, it provides them a little bit greater flexibility in terms of being compliant within the CRA regulation.
And I know we didn't, I know it didn't involve employees, but we did one recently for the, to allow the owners of the condos in the, what used to be the old Friedlander Building to be a party to the CRA agreement. This is something in a similar vein.
Correct, yep.
I mean, I just want to add, too, I mean, Adam Briggs and, of course, the Briggs family over the period of years has been very, very supportive of this community and accommodating them, and this was, I think, the right thing to do.
And with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council. Please, this is a third and final reason.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-31 passes. That brings us to resolution 2022-50. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is budgeted, hence no reason to suspend the rules, but before I get to Mr. Ansel, would you please read the title there, Mr. Paulo?
Resolution number 2022-50, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into a professional services contract with Jones &amp; Henry for design services and allowing for immediate enactment.
Thank you. Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is an ongoing upgrade to the water resource and recovery facility for the city. At our last meeting, we approved resolution 2022 that addressed the VLR-5, the vertical loop reactor and aerators in tanks one and two, and that was an emergency repair, and it also supported ongoing engineering review to increase capacity at our operations. This is more of a preventive maintenance initiative, addressing our existing VLR tanks, one and two, and upgrading the mechanicals that support that operation. They're, you know, what, 30 years old at this point in time? And this is more of a proactive initiative to have our expert, Jones &amp; Henry, who were involved with the original design and ongoing review of our operations involving these systems. So they now will come in, do the review work, and we will, on a proactive basis, replace the VLR tanks in one and two and improve the aeration mechanicals. So it's one of those things that we've, you know, gotten great useful life out of our current operations, but the expanded capacity combined with the proactiveness associated with not having downtime incurred will be covered under this initiative. The total fund requirement, the budget, is $157,950. It is budgeted, and since this coincides with our previous resolution and approval, I will motion to adopt this evening so we can move this along. And Roger is here if there are any technical questions, but I think he did a pretty shot last time explaining the focus required to manage these ongoing operations for the city. Very important operations for the city.
Well, I heard you move to adopt this resolution.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Our motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any questions, comments? Ms. Knappich?
I do have a question. The rotors are going to be removed from the tanks, and we'll be replacing them with a fine bubble aeration. Will the mechanics of the bubble aeration, do they need as much maintenance as the rotors do, or?
They do not.
Okay, and what is the life expectancy of the aerators, the bubble aeration?
Fourteen years out of them.
And how many years did we get out of the rotors?
Let's see, it was 2005, so seventeen.
Okay.
My misstatement.
And will the aerator, the fine bubble aeration, be able to take on more than what we've been able to with the rotors? I know that's an issue.
Well, part of the request is for them to make that study.
Okay.
If we can, as good, probably better if they're willing to study that, so that we know what the capacity is at the plant.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing no one else wanting to weigh in, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
Resolution number 2022-50 passes. Final piece of legislation is ordinance number 2022-32. It'll be presented by Mr. Reynolds. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2022-32, an ordinance authorizing annexation of municipally-owned property contiguous to the existing corporation limits pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 709.14, and authorizing the Director of Law to prosecute the proceedings necessary to affect it and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. We saw this several meetings ago when we passed a resolution offering services in connection with this, I believe. This involves three slivers of land. The petition describes them as being near Oak Hill Road. That's slightly incorrect. They're really in Oak Hill Road. What has happened is land has annexed on each side of it. It's kind of a little bit of an unusual situation. I'm not even sure what the history is on this, as to how the city ended up with the ownership of the road itself, but we did years ago, and now we are seeking to annex in these slivers. There's three slivers, one of .214 acres, one of .537 acres, and one of .131 acres. And all we're trying to do is make sure that there's no gaps within the corporate limits there where the road is itself. And again, this happened really following the school annexation a couple of years ago. So otherwise, I'd like to move this to third and final.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reynolds to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? I don't know why we would be opposed to annexing land that the city owns into the city. My guess is there's no voters on any of this land.
Not residing there, but-
Bob, was it a city easement or a county easement? When you look, it's, you know, parallel to the Oak Hill. Is that what it was, Joel? Was it just a county easement right of way?
I think it was just right of way that got left out of previous annexations.
So technically, if I'm driving north on Oak Hill and Chief Fisher pulls me over, I'm on city property on Oak Hill, but when he pulls me over, I'm then technically in the county, so he'd have to call the sheriff.
Yeah, well, he-
Because if he sees you violating the law in the city-
Oh, he can pursue me, okay.
Well, but there also, there is also a provision under the Ohio Revised Code that says if it's city-owned, we have jurisdiction, so.
Good, we didn't want to have any problems.
So you'd have to call your daughter to bail you out.
I don't intend to do anything wrong on Oak Hill.
Oh, okay.
If I could address-
Just like Mr. Ansel always does the speed limit in town.
No, there's not enough room for a high-speed chase, there is.
On foot.
All right, where were we before we got interrupted?
I was gonna say, I think that line, I think this is, that hard line there is a center line of the road. So the properties on the west side, their boundary line ran to the center of the road, I believe that's correct. And so what we're annexing in is the east half of the roadway. So in answer to Mr. Myers' question, are you heading north in your example or heading south?
Depends, okay. Very interesting.
Good point.
All right, well, let's fix it.
So, that being said, are we on?
We're ready to suspend the rules, and I can call roll.
Yes, would you call? That's what I thought.
Okay. Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended. I look to you for another motion there, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, I'm moved that we adopt ordinance number 2022-32.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Ms. Knappich's voice first. I didn't hear Mr. Dordia's, my goodness. Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
And Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-32 passes. Brings us to the miscellaneous portion. We've had one person sign up to speak during the miscellaneous portion. Linda, if you would come and state your name and address and tell us what you have to say. I remind you, you got a two-minute limit.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to share with you that the Wayne County Housing Coalition is gearing up to open the severe weather shelter again this year at the Salvation Army. It'll be open from December 1st until, up until March 31st if needed. And we are increasing the temperature this year from a frigid 20 degrees Fahrenheit, or feels like 20 degrees, up to a less frigid degree of 25 degrees Fahrenheit. And as a result of that, and the predictions for the cold weather this winter, we're expecting to have the shelter open more this year. It was open last year for 72 nights, served 118 unduplicated guests, or an average of 16 guests per night. So we're expecting to have that, meet that number again this year and exceed it. Local citizens and entities such as the City of Worcester, service clubs, civic groups, and churches donated $18,000 last year to enable us to staff the center overnight from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And the staff is actually social service agency professionals that are doing double duty, and we pay them $20 an hour to be there overnight. That's really challenging for us to find those folks to do that for 72-plus nights out of the year. In addition to those, we had 50 volunteers last year that greet the guests as they come in the door from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And then we had nine churches and two local restaurants that helped to provide meals for the folks that were there in the evening. It's always a nice hot meal for them. This-
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead and finish.
Okay, you sure? We have, we're hoping to raise $30,000 this year to cover the expenses, the overnight expenses. We're going to be paying $20 an hour for that eight hours, 10 hours of service there. We're going to start training volunteers. That'll be held at the Salvation Army on November 14th, which is next Monday, I think, for new interested volunteers. And on the 28th, we'll be doing a refresher for the folks that had volunteered the year before, and we require BCI checks on all of our volunteers. So that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Smith passed out both a flyer for volunteers and a flyer that donations could be made, so.
Can I say one more thing about that?
Sure.
If you write a check to the United Way, the municipal agent, please mark on it "for the severe weather shelter," because they had some confusion about that last year.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion for council. We'll start out with Mr. Ansel.
Nothing to add this evening, Mr. President.
All right. Ms. Warden?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Couple things, Mr. Chair. First of all, I was at Planning Commission last Thursday night. meeting dealing with some important topics, and I know BZI met right afterwards for a marathon session. And probably don't thank them enough, but I appreciate all the volunteers on all our commissions, but those two probably have it the toughest, I think, because they're in the spotlight on a lot of decisions. And they're not easy decisions to make. So I want to thank all our volunteers that serve the committee, community and all our commissions. I've been before both those commissions in my prior life, and I've not always agreed with the members on all occasions. But I've always tried to go out of my way to thank them for their service, even when we did not see eye to eye on things. But with regards to the Planning Commission in particular, we have headed towards, is a recommendation from Planning Commission regarding our five zoning districts. Our five zoning districts are mobile home parks. Several years ago, before I was on before many, maybe many of us were on council, basically a moratorium was put on the creation or expansion of mobile home parks. I think that can be tied back directly to the Lower Wall Street experiences. The administration has come up with a proposal to modify that zoning district to allow multifamily housing. And that proposal was approved by Planning Commission, which comes to us as a recommendation. So it looks like that will be in front of us on November 21st for a first reading. I know there's and I think probably many of you or not, maybe all of you have are aware that there are other proposals out there. Specifically, some of the mobile home parks would want the ability to go back to expansion. They I don't think they're against the addition of multifamily housing in there, but they would also like to see the ability, again, to expand existing mobile home parks within those districts already zoned there. So what I'm going to do is ask for a committee meeting, and I think procedurally, what we want to do is have our first reading on November 21st. Plan on a laws and ordinance committee meeting on December 5th, which would be the night of the second reading. We'd also do the public hearing that night. So just keep that on your radar. The other thing is, I guess, the second thing I want to talk about while we're talking on volunteers is that my wife dragged me off the couch yesterday. We went out to Worcester Memorial Park, or for the old timers here, we call it Spangler Park. And first of all, being a Browns fan, I had forgotten how peaceful and restful a Sunday afternoon could be in the fall. It was just beautiful out there, but it was packed. I mean, a lot of people taking advantage of the weather. And I had not been out there for a few years and had not been out there since the storm in the spring. And I would say, as long as the weather's cooperative, you ought to get out there and see it. But as impressive, I don't know if impressive is the right word, but as stunning as results of that storm were out there, the amount of work that has went into clearing that place up, and I know that a lot of that was done by volunteers of not city volunteers necessarily, but on the friends of Worcester Memorial Park. I appreciate all the time and effort that they put into that. And that's something that, you know, a lot of things we could talk about, well, go back to your memories, kids, things maybe aren't as nice. I don't think there's a question that Worcester Memorial Park is nicer now than it's ever been. I mean, great strides have been made of that during my lifetime. So very appreciative of what the city's done on that. I know our people do a lot of work out there, but there's a lot of volunteer work that goes into that property as well. So I want to thank them.
Bob, what time do you think you'd like to have that committee meeting?
I'll get back to you. It'll be it'll be two meetings from now, so let me straighten that out between now and next meeting, and next meeting we'll figure that out.
Sounds good.
Anything further?
That's it. I'm all talked out.
All right, Mr. Cavan?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Ms. Knappick?
I just want to congratulate the city and Jonathan on that grant for the fire station. We really need that. And you're a perfect example of the squeaky wheel, getting the grease and just keep calling them back and getting them to give us what we want. And I appreciate that. And I want to thank Mr. Myers for his presentation on the recycling. I urge everybody to go to the website and see what can be recycled and what can't be recycled. I mean, I've been recycling for 40 years and found something I could recycle tonight, so now I'll start reading that. So thank you very much for your presentation. That's all.
And Mr. Myers?
I think you've heard enough from me this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, and it was an excellent presentation.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I stole it from the class and.
And Mr. Sanders, and I want to make sure we don't have the clash of the Titans because I know with budget coming up here, might.
Well, we are going to have a clash because I was going to announce a finance committee meeting for December 5th at 6:30, so I'm not sure how we can work through this.
We'll sort that out.
All right. So one way or another, we're having at least one committee meeting on the 5th of December. Any thoughts I have on yours, next council meeting?
It would work for me. I mean, there's no reason we couldn't.
Yeah, maybe that'll work out best since normally I know that the last couple of meetings here in the end of the year usually are reserved for the finance committee meeting. And if you don't mind, why don't we just figure on? Do you have another meeting?
Well, maybe. I'm pretty sure when that comes before council, there also has to be a public hearing.
Yeah.
So as long as we schedule that public hearing, I'm looking at Lynn, at the same time, or like have our committee meeting, have our public hearing, and then they have
On the 5th.
First reading. Well, all on the.
On the 21st. That just means I'll have to get notices out to the residents in the next day or two.
That's why I'm bringing it up, yeah.
Well, I figure if worse comes to worse, it's still if we're not going to pass legislation, we could have the public hearing on that for technically both matters on the 5th, so.
Good.
So.
Yeah, you could have.
Anyways. I'll leave that to everyone's discretion, so. So Mr. Sanders, I didn't mean to derail you from if you had any comments under the.
I did not. That was all I had this evening, Mr. President.
Good enough. And I heard in my bad ear that Mr. Ansel moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Doherty motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Sanders. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
That was.